To order, would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The school committee convened an executive session at 5:45 on personnel matters. There were no votes taken in executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular minutes of September 25th and executive session of September 25th. By Mr. Marciano, seconded by Ms. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to seal the executive session in compliance with our state law.
Without objection, minutes will be sealed. No one has signed up for public comment? Move on to the consent agenda.
Motion made to approve.
Motion made by Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Marciano. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda is the superintendent's report. I'll now turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just referring back to the consent agenda, I'd like to acknowledge some of the people who were hired just now. We have some content leaders for our middle schools who were hired. If you guys would just please stand. I'd also like to, first of all, welcome our interim finance director, Mr. Joseph Crowley, who joins us at the table. And I'd also like to recognize our appointment this evening for our new finance director, Ms. Lisa Casinelli. Lisa, if you would please stand. Little bit of information about Lisa. Lisa was the fiscal, the lead fiscal agent in the Situate School Department and currently the assistant business manager in the Barrington School Department. She's educated at Bryant University and we're very happy about the fact that she too is invested in our community as a resident of the town of North Providence. So I'd like to welcome Lisa Casinelli as the new business manager for the North Providence School Department. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the recognition of the Rhode Island Interscholastic League 2018-2019 Girls Tennis Coach of the Year, Mr. Jerry Rubino.
Jerry, if you can come up here, Jerry, please.
So a little information about Jerry. Jerry is the girls varsity tennis coach. First, he started at Bayview Academy, 1989 and 1990, the girls varsity tennis coach at North Providence High School from 1991 to the present. Boys assistant tennis coach in 2019. He's had five division championships and two state championships in tennis. Congratulations to Mr. Rubino. Chairman Pallada will present Mr. Rubino with a certificate of appreciation and recognition on behalf of the North Providence School Department.
We have a school committee citation, Jerry. It is hereby known to all that the North Providence School Committee hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jerry Rubino for being named the Rhode Island Interscholastic League's 2018-19 Girls Tennis Coach of the Year. Entire membership extends very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success proposed this 23rd day of October 2019.
Thank you, Jerry. Just a footnote, the girls won their playoff game tonight.
Thanks, Jerry. Next item on the agenda, I would like to invite the principal of Greystone Elementary School and Mike Mealy from Highlander, Stephanie LaFleur, principal, and Mike from Highlander to give us an overview of the R-15 grant that has been awarded to North Providence. And we are extremely excited to be one of six districts, I believe, or six districts participating in this statewide grant. Mike and Stephanie.
Good evening. We are well. How are you? So we're really happy that we had this opportunity to present this work to you today, tonight. Mike's going to do a majority of the talking, but I will be adding some Greystone tidbits during the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming me here tonight. I'm very excited to and thrilled to be working with Greystone this year and to be diving into this really awesome opportunity with you all here in North Providence. So before I get into what we're doing, for those of you who don't know what the Highlander Institute is, we are an educational nonprofit located here in our big little state of Rhode Island. And we kind of do work through four different avenues, through services, programs, resources, and events. So we partner with schools as we're doing through this RI9 Pathways Project for school change and coaching. We offer programs and events throughout the year, such as our big national conference that we offer every April where 1,500 educators from around the country come into Providence to see the amazing teaching and learning happen. And then everything we do is open source, so that way, as we learn and grow through this process, we can share that with other schools, other districts, around our state, but also around the country. So in our early years, our first part of our work was really focused on blended learning. And really, we found that we were making really strong blended and personalized classrooms. So teachers were doing a mixture of direct, small group instruction, online instruction that was enhancing, and then working on either collaborative groups or independent work to kind of push that work forward. But we then found that we were kind of creating these really awesome classrooms, but the work wasn't scaling. So in 2018, we really took a step back and looked at our work. And Sean Rubin and Kathy Sanford at the Institute kind of looked at all of our practice around the state and the country that we were doing and kind of put together this framework that would start with learning about students, building on strategies and resources to get to know those students, and then from there, building these self-directed learners. And that's what kind of built into the framework. So there's a little story I like to tell that goes along with this work. So when we think of travel, I'm trying to book a trip to go see my friend in San Francisco this summer. And to get there, I can drive, I could take a plane. It's a very direct path, right? But oftentimes in education, we don't have that direct path. We have a lot of different paths to get there. And sometimes, we don't even know what the paths are. The map is completely gone. Or we don't even know where we're going or even where we're starting. Through the framework, we find an entry point by really getting to know that school. Yeah, that's fine.
So over the summer, a lot of the Greystone teachers spent time at Highlander, professional learning opportunities. And Mike and I spent a lot of time together gathering information from students, from families, from just our data sources, whether it be testing data and whatnot. So the past couple of, well, since June, we've been gathering information. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. So as Mr. Gojo said, Greystone is one of nine schools in Rhode Island to take part in this process. This is a three-year grant opportunity. So we will have 300 hours per year over three years. So it'll be 900 hours total, plus 100 hours a year of data support. So the data office at the Highlander Institute, all the data that is being collected, whether it's RI-CAS scores, whether it's Ames Up testing, student attendance, all is going to Highlander. And we are creating a dashboard for Greystone that we can look at demographics, subgroups, to really see where the impact is happening, as well as where we want to push more. And the reason why Greystone was chosen in North Providence was, as we were looking at the districts that we wanted to work with, we wanted to find a district that we knew was ready for this kind of school change work that also had the mindset of making that kind of impact. So one thing that happened was that Mr. Gojo took part in the Fuse Leader Program for, was it two years? One year, two years? Two years? Yeah, thank you. And through that work, we got to know the work he was doing at the high school. And then when we saw that he became superintendent, we knew that North Providence was a really good starting point for this work because we knew it was going to have a lot of exciting impact. Then we were lucky enough that Greystone was a school that was chosen by North Providence for us to work with. And from there, we've kind of started diving really deep into the work built around this idea of school change.
So over time, now that we have collected the data, gathered all our information, now we're developing a vision and a mission for our school change efforts. We've established four pilot teachers in the building. It's our grades three and five classrooms. The pilot teachers are going to test new ideas based on priority practices. Over time, we'll, well, consistently, we'll be collecting data, reflecting, and making changes again. So it truly is a school improvement effort with continuous improvement occurring very frequently. Next year, we plan to scale it to two more grade levels. And then by the third year, we hope the whole building will be working on this project.
Thank you. So like I said, it's a three-year plan that is working together. Right now, we're in the plan phase, so we have just finished that huge data collection. And we've just launched our first design team meeting. What I really enjoy about our design teamwork is the people that are involved. So we have, as we talked about, those pilot teachers. We have one really awesome lead change agent at the building. We have two awesome lead change agents at the district level. We have a design team of parents and teachers and community members. And then we have those pilot teachers that are going to be trying out the practices in their classroom to see what really is sticking and having impact on student learning that will then scale throughout the building and eventually, hopefully, throughout the district as well. I think that the way we've kind of done the work and the way we talked about the work originally is that the goal is that North Providence will become almost like a pilot district for the state so that North Providence is leading the way in this innovative, personalized learning approach. I'm excited.
Yes, we're very excited. Being a new principal, this has been an incredible opportunity to partner with them. I'm able to really dive into data, get to know my families, my students, and teachers, and really be thoughtful about what needs to happen to increase student achievement and growth at the building level, so.
So I'd like to open any questions or thoughts that I can answer while I'm here tonight, but I thank you so much for letting me speak.
Anyone have any questions?
Hi, thank you. I was just wondering if, and maybe you said it and I missed it, the success indicators that would align back to your year-to-year plan and what's the pathway for progress monitoring?
Awesome. So we're in that design team process, so we're going to use the family of measures to do that. So we're going to use your outcome data, which will be probably the Ames Web with the RI-CAS, as well as process using our Highlander Priority Practice walkthrough tool, which I think you're familiar with, as well as balance data. So we have student focus groups happening, teacher focus groups, family focus groups, and student and teacher surveys going out throughout the building as well. We'll be checking that data in April, and then once again in June, and then we'll check it again September and December for this first section of the pilot.
And what were the grade levels again that we said we're starting with?
The pilots starting with grades three and five.
Any other questions? I have a question or a comment. So the data point is going to be the RI-CAS test scores?
One of the data points.
Okay. And so are you going to draw a correlation between the other data points and the RI-CAS test scores?
Are we going to do that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. And you're going to use the current test scores or are you going to go back a year?
We can, we'll go as back as far as we'd like. So we went, we used last year's. We're currently digging into this year's.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment. So just to sum up, so we're very fortunate that we were chosen by Highlander as part of this grant. So it's 100 hours per year for each of the next three years of on-the-ground, in-the-classroom support and training for our teachers, which is?
300 hours per year.
Oh, 300.
So it's 900 in total.
300 hours per year. Wow. So if we had to pay for that, it'd be a tremendous amount of money. So to have that kind of support and training for our teachers through a grant that doesn't impact the taxpayers is fantastic. And the whole goal is to improve the teaching and learning process so that the classroom becomes more engaged with blended learning. And we're hoping that the results will show up in standardized achievement. Great, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Coach Rubino, I don't know if you want to dismiss your tennis team, but that's up to you. So you can rest up for the match tomorrow, but they're welcome to stay. So the next item on the agenda is just an update to the school committee about where we stand on the new legislation requiring schools to develop threat assessment teams. It's kind of a misnomer, the term threat assessment team. The team at each school is not a team that assesses safety and security procedures at a school. Actually, what this is more of a clinical team where if a student is indicating behavior that could be concerning to any of the adults in the school community, there is a process by which a student can be referred and screened by a team at the school to determine if, in fact, there is reason to be concerned. So we have been working, Ms. Van Avery has been placed in charge of this initiative. She's been working very closely with Ben Scungeo's office and his associates. So we're in the process of putting together district-wide procedures, a handbook and protocols. And once we're, and once we have all of that ready to go and in place, we will bring a policy before the school committee for you guys to approve. But we just wanted to update the district in terms of our compliance with that legislation, what the meaning of it is, and where we stood at this time. Ms. Van Avery, is there anything else that you would like to add? Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is the report by the Assistant Superintendent, Louise Seitzinger. Initially, the report was going to be a multitude of things, but amongst that was the achievement of our high school students on the PSAT and the SAT, which we saw a pretty good improvement in those areas where three out of the four areas showed significant growth on the PSAT and the SAT. But as you probably have also read in the newspaper, the RI-CAS scores for the state were released yesterday as well. And so what we wanted to do was share with you the preliminary data that we have in terms of the aggregate proficiency rates of our students. And we are cautiously optimistic by the numbers that have come in for North Providence. The commissioner has rightly stated that in the second year of a test, you can expect to see small growth and, you know, growth that is not unexpected. What is unexpected is when you see the amount of green that we saw in North Providence at all of our schools and the percentage of growth is not typical. So although we would like to see these results become a consistent trend over a year, over a number of years before we become extremely excited, we are definitely cautiously optimistic and pleased that so many of our schools showed significant growth in a multitude of areas on RI-CAS. So without stealing your thunder, Ms. Seitzinger, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the news.
I just wanted to go back. So did you want to review, look at the PSAT and SATs? You have that on the update that I gave you as well, but as Superintendent Gojo just said, you have three of the four areas going up, and it gives you the percentage that they went up for the PSAT 10 and also the SAT.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If I could just, you know, just to start off as a district. So in ELA, we improved 13% overall as a district in terms of proficiency on RI-CAS. And in mathematics, we improved 8% as a district. So that's pretty substantial. When you see second year of a test, you expect to see 2%, 3%, 4% growth, and that's what the commissioner is speaking to when she says that is expected. But when you see 13% in one area, 8% in another, that's pretty encouraging. Obviously, we would like to have more students at proficiency, and we know that that is the goal, but these initial results and that 13% and the 8%, hopefully, is the beginning of a trend.
It's really, I mean, I agree. I'm a little biased, but I'm really positive to see the growth that we've seen. I mean, you can look at the figures yourself, it's pretty clear. You can see that Bertrud went up 30% in ELA. I mean, that's really significant. And in math, too, all of the schools went up a great deal in math. And the lighter green, it's remained, you know, it's 1 to 3%. So that's negligible. But the bottom line is you want to stay either there or increase. You don't want to see the decreases. So it's, I think it's quite significant, and it speaks to the work that we've been doing in terms of last year when we analyzed our data, we worked on our action plans, you know, the supports that we've had in place with interventions, with the professional development at the district level and at the school level. We've really worked hard in the last two years, and I think it shows, and we're really proud of that. But as Superintendent Gojo just said, the 13% increase in proficiency for ELA and 8% in math, I mean, anything above 3% is significant. So it's, you know, now what we need to do is celebrate our gains, but also maintain that momentum, as we've said. And so keep doing the work we're doing. We are going to work with our principals on data analysis. I'm in the process, I've compiled a lot of data for them and analyzed a lot for them so that they can, at the school level, take that now and work with their teams. And then we will also have a district data team that will work on these plans and work together, looking at the SAT, the PSAT. And I wanted to mention that the high school's already working on their plans, and now the schools will be working on their plans based on RI-CAS. And that growth percentile score, that's based on a score of 1 to 99. So what you want to see, again, is growth, and I highlighted that as well because that's significant because that's one of the variables that we get rated on for the accountability score. So it's not just proficiency, it's growth and all of those things that we need to think about because we want to reduce the gaps. We still have many children that are in the partially proficient range. So what we can do at the school level and as a district, we're going to look at those students and say, what do we need to do to make sure they get to the proficiency? It's challenging. And our subgroup scores, as, you know, as it is for every district, it's difficult. You know, the special ed group, the ELL group, we need to do some work with those groups, and we know that. So those are the things that we're going to be focusing on, and we're really excited about that work. So that's just a snapshot. I have many other graphs I can show you probably next time in more depth and certainly to answer any questions you have about that.
Yeah, we just wanted to share the news with the community and give you some initial feedback in terms of what our scores look like. We'll be disaggregating the data and the grade level data much more over the next month, working with the schools as well. But we just wanted you to hear it first from us in terms of so far, so good in terms of the second year of the test for the district.
And including the cohorts, too. The cohort data, meaning when a third grader was, a third grader last year going to the fourth grade, et cetera, this past year, you know, it's really important to look at that because that speaks to the instruction happening in the classroom. So we'll look at all of that. Did you have a question?
I, yes, I do. Is that fine? So my question was around more about the family report out and not big picture, right? So I want to, I know the parents will get the student report out that has very specific detail. What I'm thinking about is how do we help provide our family with that data conversation of what's the success plan for my child? This is where my child is. What does that mean? Here's the plan. And I think that's where we tend not to be so strong in. I think, you know, we send out report cards, we send out data reports to parents, and we don't necessarily take the time individually because I don't want to have a conversation about my child in a large group setting, right? So I wonder about, and maybe that's a conversation with our parent advisory council first, maybe that's with our school level teams, school improvement teams. But I would love to see us think about, if a school's doing it, I would love to know who's doing it, and maybe they could share that success because I think it's a valuable asset that we don't capitalize on. And I know as a parent, if I saw in a middle school that my child, in seventh grade, we have two released essays. And if they got a score of a six, a three, and a zero, that's a conversation as a parent I can have and specifically say, what happened? You know, and the kids will say, I'm tired, it was a long day. But parenting, we can capitalize on something that we don't typically do. So I'd love to see us maybe have that conversation and bring that to light.
I agree. I think it's really important for kids to understand how they scored, and that includes formative assessments in the classroom, but also statewide assessments like this because I think it's really powerful in terms of their ownership, but also setting goals for themselves.
And I think it builds on what we heard Cynthia say last month about a student's voice in their IEPs, right? It's not just about student's voice in IEPs, it's student's voice in their success in education, period. So what does that look like and how can we build on that?
And maybe, I know we're learning about the new regulations, maybe through school improvement teams and things like that, we can work on that at the school levels. I would love to work on things like that. I totally understand and support that. I just wanted to mention briefly, too, in the update, I mentioned that we're working on attendance with our principals, and every school is working on plans for their attendance. So we work with attendanceworks.org, and actually, the superintendent has committed to that among many superintendents in the country, but he was listed as one of the recognized superintendents. So it's really important because, as Mike said earlier, it's about the investment from all of us, you know, starting with our superintendent. So it's really important, and they're really working hard to celebrate, you know, positive attendance and also work on the chronic absenteeism because that's also something else that's looked at in terms of the accountability ratings, both teacher and student attendance. So we're looking at it very carefully. And also, just that we've continued our professional learning. This past week, we started our middle school professional learning. I want to recognize Katie Bowers for the wonderful work she does. She's facilitating all of my middle school professional learning, and she does an outstanding job. She's a Fuse Fellow, she's just an outstanding teacher, and teachers learn best from other teachers. So that's the model that we've been using since I've been here, and I'm really, really excited about that, and the feedback is so positive. So thank you, Katie, and thanks for all the hard work. We've also had, in the past month or so, we've had more Lexia training and keyboarding without tears training and words their way. So we're really excited about the initiatives that are happening. And the bottom line is it should hopefully impact achievement in the classroom. That's the key. And support the teachers and their teaching. And also, I want to recognize Laura and Paul Dexter for the wonderful DTC Second Annual 5K Health and Wellness Walk and Run. And we raised through their, everyone's generosity, over $8,627. And each school is going to be receiving over $1,000 for fitness and recess equipment. So it's really outstanding. So thank you to them, and what a wonderful community member. So that's it, unless you have other questions.
Thank you, Louise. Nice job.
Just had a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm really pleased that the scores are going up. Let's keep the ball rolling, and I want to congratulate our staff, all the work they've done with our students, including from the superintendent all the way down. And also, I'd like to mention Massachusetts has been taking this test for quite a while, right? I noticed the news media did it again, you know, when I read the paper this morning, I gave it a quick glance. You know, they showed a comparison, how well they're doing in Massachusetts and everything. But this is what, our first year?
Second year.
Second year?
Yeah. This will be the third year.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that if we can keep the ball rolling, we'll pass Massachusetts, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Not to repeat what Mr. Marciano said, but to support what Mr. Marciano said. I think educators have to take back the conversation about where we're going, how we're going to get there. You saw the presentation with Highlander, which had a lot of strategy to it. Hopefully, that's going to assist us in moving our test scores forward with the rest of the district in terms of what they're going to learn and what they're going to share with the rest of the schools. But I think it's really vitally important that we continue to support our teachers, continue to support our educators, continue to support anyone who interacts with kids in a very positive way. I think that's extremely important. And we can't forget to continue to support our parents where they need assistance because I think without that component, it's going to be very difficult to see a lot of progress. So I think Mrs. Picard is correct in speaking about the parent component. I've always looked at it as a triangle, it's the parent, the school, and the community that work together, and the sen- this child is in the center of that triangle. And I think, you know, we're finally reaching the point where we clearly understand that, and we really need to keep that conversation uh going forward in a positive way. So thank you very much, this is a starting point, hope to build on this and continue to have that graph go in an upward motion. Thank you. We have no school committee reports, we have no old business, moving on to item number ten, new business. Turn it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Pallada. So I'd like the approval in the form of a motion from the school committee to approve the administrative contract as submitted.
Motion made by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. De Silva, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like the approval in the form of a motion from the school committee to approve the contract for the interim administrator, the interim finance director.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. De Silva, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like the uh school committee to approve in the form of a motion, the contract with the Veterans Memorial Auditorium for the twenty twenty graduation ceremony.
Motion by Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. Corsini, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'm requesting the committee to approve the contract with the Marriott Downtown Providence for the North Providence High School Junior Prom.
Motion by Mrs. Picard.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pollak, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like the approval of the school committee to approve the agreement with the off-site evacuation location for Greystone Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. De Silva, questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
We've been asked to discuss and consider a reduced fee for dance workshop in the use of the North Providence High School auditorium. They are requesting that their fee remain what they say has, uh, what has been in line at seven hundred and fifty dollars for their, for the rental.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. Corsini, any questions?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Is this a dance workshop, is this a North Providence organization?
Yeah.
They're from the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like the approval of the school committee for um the transportation RFP, the bid for our busing company. Um, that we've been working closely with the legal counsel, and our Ben's office has um provided um guidance and edits for the RFP. Um, he's here to, along with me, answer any questions that you might have, but I'd ask the school committee to approve that RFP so that we may send it out uh in a timely manner and determine whether we are going to continue with our current busing situation or go in another direction, but the RFP is the first step in that process.
Motion made.
Motion by Mr. De Silva.
Discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Marciano. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Discussion.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Picard.
My only uh review of the RFP, I'd, I'd like to know about when services are not rendered. Where we see that, for example, when buses are arriving on time to school, I would like there to be some kind of a clause, and I know we could use it in the contractual phase, and maybe um Ben can assist with this. But I would like to see some reimbursement language put in, some, you know, like, for example, the, especially around arrival times, pickup times, um, the confusion. Like, we have seen not really much restitution, and we've received a lot of errors in this last go-around around, um, like, it would have been nice to even say, okay, you know what, we made a lot of mistakes. We have students who are on athletic trips for games who have buses that don't show up, that happens way too many times. So what's the reimbursement to the district for a service that's not provided? So I'd really like us to think about those kinds of things, so, and I think a company would avoid them if we had some teeth in the game.
So Ben, I would just ask, would that be something we would enter into in the contractual phase, or does the RFP have to be adjusted? Okay, so to answer your question, we can address it in, make a change, in the RFP where there is a section already that speaks to this, and then also in the contractual phase.
So we have a motion on the floor, so.
I have a question, if I may.
Sorry, Ms. Andrew.
Yes, I'm sorry. So in the RFP, uh, there's a lot of pages here, I'm just curious, are, are cameras a requirement on, on the buses? In, in, out, or just out?
Inside, I believe.
Okay, so, well, they do have them outside for, for people who pass.
The speeding ones, the speeding tickets.
Yeah, for people who pass the buses.
Yeah, when they pass the bus.
Well, we do have a program where we collect money presently. Correct. We, I believe we get some money each month from people who pass the school buses illegally. Okay, so cameras would be in, in, out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the individual made the motion, are you willing to amend the motion to accept the uh commentary from Mrs. Picard and Mr. Andriozzi?
Uh, make the motion with the amendments.
Okay, Mr. Marciano, you seconding that, you support that, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Next items on the agenda are the second read of the field trips, uh, excuse me, the field trip policy, the travel policy, food service policy, and the student activity policy. We had the first read at the previous meeting, all of the suggestions and the edits that were mentioned and requested at that meeting have been incorporated into the second read. Um, so those items are on the agenda to document that we are having the second read of those uh policy changes tonight.
So we need a vote on the third read.
No.
So there's no vote, we, yeah, we, we would approve them at the third read, which will be next month, but um the first one is the discussion of the field trip policy, second read.
Any comments? I, I just have one comment. Of the field trip policy, the second page. Of the page, the second sentence, it currently reads, "Field trips and school-sponsored trips shall not require approval of the North Providence School Committee." I believe we do approve those, and we should remove the word "not."
We only approve the out-of-state.
Right.
Correct, so we should clarify that in the policy, though, the school committee does approve the out-of-state field trips, we approve the in-house field trips and the in-state field trips. Right. So that policy should be um clarified to say that.
Clarified, okay.
Out-of-state field trips. Next item? Oh, is that, is that all, Dr.?
Yeah.
The next item is the discussion, second read of the travel policy.
Any co- any comments?
This is professional travel.
Yes, reimbursement for professional travel.
Yes. Item J.
Next item is the discussion, second read of the food service policy.
Any comments? On the second page, um, under item A, it says, "When the account has an outstanding or negative balance, the parent guardian will be notified via telephone or email by the food service provider." I would suggest that we add the word mail, telephone, mail, and email. You got that, Louise? I'm fine with certified mail.
Do you want us to put both in there, certified mail, regular mail?
No, just put certified mail.
Certified mail.
And uh, item number six, it says, "When charging privileges have been suspended, the food service provider, along with the finance office, shall be responsible for notifying the parents." I would suggest, "When charging privileges have been suspended, the food service provider shall notify the finance director." And both shall be responsible for notifying the parents.
Dr. Pallada, could, I, I'm thinking even add that the school should be notified, too, I think as the building administration, they should know, or even receive a list of who's being notified, right?
I have no problem with that.
I have a list as well, Mr. Goho, I have an email being sent to you.
So, Mr. Crowley, these policies are probably located on the computer in your office, and so I know Louise was diligently taking notes, but uh the policy template is in your office, so those edits will have to come from there. Next item on the agenda is.
Item K.
Item, uh, the, yes, the second, the discussion, second reading of the student activity policy.
Any questions or comments? Item L.
This is the first read of the revised property usage policy, I've been working very closely with Mr. Faroli, um, to ensure that when we um allow our uh schools to be utilized, that appropriate controls and supervision um and language is in place in terms of liability for the renting organization. So um you have a policy before you, um, that includes some language that we worked on. I had a conversation with the chair of the policy subcommittee uh earlier today, Mrs. Picard. So some of the language in the policy still needs to be edited and updated, so we, she and I are going to communicate um with each other prior to the next meeting. Um, but we just wanted to make sure we got the um crux of the issues in terms of supervision in the revised policy, knowing that we still have to edit some of the language, which Mrs. Picard and I will do. And then I'll share with the rest of the policy subcommittee, and then the full school committee for the second reading at the November meeting.
Any other comments? Item M.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion and first read of a revised transportation policy. So I asked to see the transportation policy, um, and the one that was given to me was last looked at in nineteen eighty-six, which is thirty-three years ago. I shouldn't say that that's old, but that's when I graduated from high school, so I probably shouldn't say that that's old, but it's old. And so I, we wanted the uh transportation policy to reflect the language of um, uh, the policies and practices utilized for redistricting in terms of uh walking mile, um, special permission, transportation, home, identification of home schools, uh, transfer of students from one school to another due to overages. And so the transportation policy did not reflect any of that language, so that language has been added, but again, this policy is thirty-three years old, and so there is some terminology in there and some language in there still that needs to be updated. And Mrs. Picard and I, again, have had a conversation about continuing to do that for next month, but the um essence of the policy should, should basically remain, remain the same as what the first draft is that is in front of you this evening.
Joe, just a note, though, um, this is actually full of protocol and not policy, so I think that's where, um, if anyone wants to take a look at this one in particular, you want to be mindful that protocols should never be embedded in policy, that should be for the school department, um, Mr. Goho and his staff to do. We want to look at the bigger picture, so the other uh policies are a good um guide for that, so if we can look at this in a way of removing protocols and keeping it strictly policy.
Yeah, so you and I will do that to update some of the language that is still outdated, and then removing some of the protocols um in time for the November twentieth, the school committee meeting. Next item on the agen- oh, any other?
Good item, man.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and approval, final read of the health and wellness policy.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. Andriozzi, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Dr. Pallada, can I just thank um Ms. Sight Sing- or for her um work alongside the team? We had a wonderful high school students, we had uh middle school admins, teachers, nurses, um, so this was a collective effort across the board in the school department. And um this would have not been at this point without her um co-leadership on this, so thank you, Louise.
Thank you, next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of the definition for the North Providence School Department of a long-term substitute teacher. Definition of that position, um, and that, and that um designation, and as, along with the benefits afforded to a person appointed to a long-term substitute position.
Motion by Mr. Marciano. Seconded by Mr. De Silva, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, I'm requesting the approval by the school committee for the removal of books from Wayland Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mrs. Picard, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, requesting the approval of the school committee of the books listed in your packet from Sanderdale Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. De Silva, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Anyone opposed? All those? Motion carries. Item eleven, use of prop- Motion by Mr. Marciano, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pollak, any questions on use of property?
The usual, the uh.
Mr. De Silva.
Question on the baseball, and I don't know if we want to commit to those times, to our facilities director. You saw the request for the baseball field, okay. So, you know, what's going to happen is we're going to approve it tonight, and then somebody's going to want it to be disapproved, and we're going to have that same dance. So for, for now, we can approve it and have the discussion later, okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, approval of bills.
Move with regret, Mr. Chairman.
I have a discussion.
Ms. Andriozzi.
I hate to do this to you, Mr. Crowley. Um, I noticed on page, I want to say it was one fifty-six, that we made two payments to the state of Rhode Island. Uh, I'll give you the exact amounts in a second, I rolled by them like a dummy, hang on one second.
What's the item number?
Uh, I'm going to tell you in one second. There were two large amounts, and, and they were both, one was from August and one was, one was from July and one was from August. I'm just wondering why we're making these payments now and why they weren't made earlier.
Till I look into it, the uh, I can't just, you know, walkhand and give you an answer to that.
I, I didn't think you'd be able to. I wish I could, okay. So are these, are these bills that are normally paid each month? Do you know that? Because I've never seen them before.
Sorry, can't help you at this point.
For everyone else, we're on page one fifty-nine. State of Rhode Island, July, fifty-six thousand five oh four, State of Rhode Island, August, thirty-nine thousand nine eighty-eight.
What was that? Yeah, I mean, the, the list of bills was submitted by the previous finance director, Joe's building up his seniority by the hour, and uh he will research these.
Yeah.
And then get back to us as soon as he can. Since, Mrs. Van, Ms. Van Avery, did you, did you have a comment or a question, no?
That's item uh on the office concepts. Fifty-six thousand.
So would it be okay for us to research that for you, Mr. Andriozzi, and get back to you?
Yeah, it just seems as though all, all of a sudden, all these bill, all these, you know, I see the bills for Davies, sixty thousand. Rhode Island Student Assistant, forty-three thousand, it just seems like all, all of a sudden, they're huge bills. International Charter, I'm assuming thirty thousand, like Meeting Street, six-
Yeah, I can tell you.
Where they all come from.
I can tell you, International Charter is a, obviously, it's a charter school, then we must have just received that bill. Uh, the Rhode Island Student Assistance Council, um, that is the portion of the Student Assistance Council's salary up here at the high school that we pay. Uh, Rhode Island Student Assistance Councilor, that is the portion of the Student Assistance Councilor salary up here at the high school that we pay, the state pays a portion of it, we pay a portion of it. So it's six or seven weeks into the school year, we probably just received that bill, I'd say, probably a couple of weeks into the school year.
Yeah, Mr. Amay, Mr. Andreozzi, I believe that, uh, what we do in the states after October first, we sort of hold that enrollment. So then, schools will now come do the students for audits replacement, so they wait and they actually hold until October first to ensure enrollment.
Okay, so all of them say held, status held, so have they been paid or are they being held? So everything's being held, okay, so, so when a bill says July and August, I'm not the smartest guy up here, but last time I checked, we're going into November. Why would a bill be held from July to now?
How about researching it?
Be able to find you an answer to that.
Thank you, because it hap, it seems to happen every month where I look at the bills and there's stuff being held for months upon months upon months, and I, you know, I'm just curious as to why it continuously happens.
Not a particularly good practice.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair, entertain a motion. Okay, was the motion on the floor by Mr. Marciano and seconded by Mr. Andreozzi? Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Next item on the agenda, item thirteen, regress to address the committee. Ask the committee. Podium, please.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of this committee, I thank you for your time here tonight, and I'll, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, and I, I'm hoping that the materials I submitted have reached all of you by now. But ultimately, I'm here arising out of a guidance document that was issued by the Rhode Island Department of Education on April tenth, twenty nineteen, in which they're discussing their interpretation of a law that was found from, back from nineteen fifty-six and hasn't been brought up since then. Being Rhode Island General Law, Section sixteen thirty-eight six A, which, to quote for you now, states that, "No public school official or public school employee shall, for any purpose, solicit or exact from any pupil in any public school, any contribution or gift of money, or article of value, or any pledge to contribute any money or article of value." And, just background on myself, is as much as I might be a student, I've worked down in Sanderdale for Gregory Chudon, down at his law office, for over a year and a half now, so I would say that I have, for my age, probably a better understanding than most of this realm that I just jumped myself into. But this guidance document essentially argues that any field trip must be paid for solely by the school, or must, that, and demands if they're not paid for by the school, that teachers would be required to use personal days, and students would be charged with unexcused absences for attending field trips. And that was deeply troubling to me that for now seventy years, we've been doing something for the same way, and that all of a sudden, it's a convenient interpretation of the law when, to limit it to field trips. And that was one of my biggest concerns with this law, is that, in interpreting that, the statement that no public school shall solicit for any purpose from any pupil, that the commissioner, would be the, the previous commissioner now, Ken Wagner, chose to limit it just to field trips. And I found that interpretation just intriguing, that he somehow found a way to limit something that's so broad in his statement for any purpose solely to field trips. So it would be that I then sent, um, under, I then sent on the, uh, twenty-fourth of September of this year, a letter to the legal office of RIDE, because I am, am a member of the Student Advisory Council to the Department of Education. Uh, which is actually something instituted by the General Assembly, not the Department of Education, so they might not necessarily love the fact that I'm around every now and then. But essentially, I was asking for information regarding this guidance document, as well as for, I had appealed to RIDE to essentially relook at this guidance document and revisit it, because by issuing a guidance document, while it lacks the force of law, the commissioner of the Department of Education essentially gets to issue her interpretation of the law without any one fact-checking it, without any input from the public. Because the guidance document simply is a letter, handed down from the executive of any state agency in Rhode Island, there is no formal rulemaking process, this goes to no committee for approval, this goes to no, this doesn't go before the Board of Education for approval. It simply is the commissioner handing down what she is quoting to be her interpretation of law. As much as it lacks the, lacks the force of law, it still is something that she's doing in what I have perceiving, in my opinion, to be this very undemocratic fashion. And in researching this law on, that allows for guidance documents, it's very clear that they should be related to agency proceedings, meaning if the commissioner wanted to advise someone within the Department of Education how to handle a situation, she could issue a guidance document to that person because it pertains to RIDE. There is plenty of arguments that I could make against this guidance document, one of the biggest ones I make is that the commissioner, originally, Ken Wagner, had relied on this, a law that states about, the commissioner has the power to, quote, "Interpret school law," which was deeply troubling to me, because I'm, I'm also not the brightest person in this room. But I do know from now two years of AP history class, that it's the judiciary that is left to interpret the law, not an executive branch. Further, I have gone back and forth now with the legal office, I've sent them two letters, and they've sent two in response to me. And in the second letter that their legal office sent to myself, the head of the legal office for RIDE said that, paraphrasing here, but I believe the letter should be submitted to you, paraphrasing that, because of my tone in both of my letters, it's no longer of instructional value to continue this discussion with me. And I find that deeply concerning, when especially as a member of a Student Advisory Council charged by the General Assembly to have a student's opinion and oversight into the department, that the attorney thinks that my tone is of issue, that is deeply concerning to me. So I have prepared, which, I was just in the process of finalizing last night, so I apologize that you don't have it yet, but I was in the process of finalizing an appeal that I intend to submit to the Commissioner of the Department of Education, reviewing the attorney's position, as well as the determinations made in this guidance letter. But the chief concern of why I'm here is I would never take an action that could perceivably hurt both the school or this town, and I just wanted input from this committee on whether or not this was an issue that is pursuable without having perceivable negative ramifications back on this town. Because like I said, I'm a member of this community, and I've been so since I was born, and I could never in good conscience take an action out of my own personal feelings and attitude that might negatively impact the town. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows, and thank you for all the research that you've done on this and the communications with RIDE. So are you still expecting a response from RIDE?
I have not, I'm, like I said, I've had, I have an appeal that would be addressed to the Commissioner of Education now, following the procedure for appealing up the food, uh, the, the chain in the agency, but I haven't submitted that yet, because I wanted to check with everyone here first.
And you're going to represent yourself in the appeal?
Correct. Only myself, yeah, I've made, I actually made the distinction very clearly in my first letter, that I was representing myself in no official sanction capacity, other than my position on the Student Advisory Council.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Marciano?
Yes, I don't have a question, but I was, I received your letter, I had to do a double take, because I said, is this an attorney's letter? Or is it a, and I saw a student, North Providence High School, I was very impressed.
Thank you.
And I think everybody on this committee probably was very impressed, you did a great job in laying out your role and your feelings and your research, and I want to congratulate.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you.
Good job. Mayor Embardi. Well, to answer, answer the mayor's concern, um, we have not made any changes in our school district. We are currently following the policy that we have in place, which is not going to deny anyone. So our field trip policy that's currently in place will remain in place. We certainly support what you're doing, but, uh, there isn't anything for us to do, because we're not, we're not, we're not following that mandate, basically. And there are probably other communities that are doing the same thing. But I think what you're trying to do is, is move the, 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 uh, inter, move it from an interpretation to a regulation, one way or the other, as opposed to an interpretation, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, actually, my, my, that was my original petition, my original petition was, to RIDE, was that if they believe so strongly in this position that they're taking, that they should promulgate a rule, which follows an established process, and then has the force of law, because it goes through this democratic process. That was my original intention, and then that's obviously since been denied, and.
So we, we are essentially supporting what you're trying to do by not changing our policy, which we have not, so we are supporting it, Mayor. We have not changed our policy.
Dr. Plata, if I may just add, also, I've met with and spoken to Nick personally as well on this issue, and encourage him to come before the school committee to air his concern. So Nick understands the policy of the district and how we are proceeding. It's unfortunate that, as you said, that RIDE has decided not to respond to your inquiry, very unfortunate and inappropriate, as the mayor mentioned, but you've gotten sufficient response from us, and, you know, we, we do support your efforts and your position in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no pending business, chair, in order to. Motion by me, by, miss, Mr. Mayor.
So just, I came here for one question, but then I'm going to have a second one. Dexter Training conducted a walk and run maybe a couple of weeks ago here in town. Was that distributed to the individual schools? Do you know how? A thousand dollars going to each individual school? So we're sending them a letter of thank you? It's on the agenda? Thank you very, very much.
Yes, Mayor, if I can also, if I can also add, we are going, we are, Mr. Pollock has contacted me, you contacted me on this as well, we are, we have invited the Dexters to come before us at the November meeting, so you're welcome to join us and recognizing them as well. And as Ms. Seitzinger presented in her, uh, portion of the meeting, eleven hundred dollars has been distributed to each school, thanks to their efforts.
Just to mean, you know, businesses to step up to the plate, such as they have the last couple of years, we need to make sure that we recognize that. But on the second thing that I, as I was here tonight, I know, I want to congratulate the new finance director in the interim. But you had said that there'd be a contract for both of these positions, and a salary for both of these positions, so, little question. So how long will the temporary finance director be on board? And what is that salary, and what is the salary for the new finance director?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer those questions. So we've worked out a contract with the interim finance director at a cost of six hundred dollars per day, which I think you'd be happy to know is two hundred dollars less per day than the previous interim director that we had, that was a hundred dollars an hour, eight, eight-hour day was eight hundred dollars a day. So Joe comes, very affordable, so thank you for that, Joe.
Very well recommended, by the way.
Yes, very highly respected in the community. And as far as Joe's tenure in North Providence, we would like to, obviously, keep the ship afloat and answer some of the questions that Mr. Andreozzi had, and things like that, with an experienced hand at the helm for at least the next month or so. Ms. Casinelli will be joining us, she's yet to inform us when she's going to let Barrington know. I know that when I spoke to the superintendent, he told me today that they were in mourning in the finance office, that she was going to be leaving Barrington, so we're very happy that she's coming home to North Providence. So once Ms. Casinelli knows what her last day will be in Barrington, then we will know when she will start in North Providence. And we would like for her to spend some time working with Mr. Crowley in a transition role, and maybe in some sort of advisory role, at least with the budget process, or at least even with the audit process. Joe is starting the audit process with Bob Savetti, he started it last week, but Ms. Casinelli has extensive experience dealing with the auditors as well, so I don't think the learning curve is going to be that much. So hopefully, Joe, you'll be around maybe a month or, month or two, we'll work that out. And as far as Ms. Casinelli, the contract that we approved for her was a salary of one hundred and twelve thousand, which is eight thousand dollars less than the previous finance director.
Good, thank you for your time and the explanation.
And Mrs., Ms. Casinelli is a resident of the town. Congratulations. Motion is in order to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Picard. Seconded by Mr. Marciano, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.